Hi, good evening and welcome to our May 11th Board meeting. Everybody watching online on Birds Eye View, thank you for joining us. We'll go ahead and start our meeting like normal, calling it's order, beginning with the roll call.
Governor Brown.
Yeah.
Harrison Gillen. Nathan Grabowick.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Yeah.
Linay Hording. Scott Scott Stod.
Here.
Marlene Whitney.
Here.
Lisa Garing.
Here.
Vicki Dinkle.
Here.
And as a note, probably can heard online, we have Harrison Gillen joining us by phone this evening. So stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with a time of open forum as we normally do. Wait just a moment to find out if we have anybody in the cafeteria. At this time, it doesn't appear there's anyone for open forum. So we'll go ahead and move on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So.
Good. And a second, favor? Opposed? That carries. We'll move on to six consent calendar, beginning with the minutes from the April 13th meeting. So those should be available too, as well as being available earlier online. Are there any questions or concerns about the minutes from the April 13th meeting? If not, we can move on to payment of bills.
Okay, I guess I have a couple things. The payment to victim decorating center for $20,000, that's just the down payment for phase two of the carpet project. And the rest of that will be paid when the job is complete. Eagle Technologies Solutions for $9,600, that was for the labor for the security system that was put in last year. We just didn't get the invoice for that until recently, so. And that was all I have unless anybody has questions.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, we'll go on to transfers.
Okay, we'd like to request $20,000 from LOB to at risk. $25,000 from LOB to vocational.
Questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar. Motion, do we have a second? We have a second, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. We'll move on to communications. Do we have anything from PK and EA? Okay, not any other communications into the district? All right, move straight into reports then. We'll start with Smoky Hill Service Center.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting since, or that's when it was right before.
Oh, right.
So we hit it early, so.
Right.
It's not till this Thursday, so I think.
Okay. Uh, and then special head co-op. With Linay not being here, of course, we have the draft minutes from their April 20th meeting. So if there's any questions regarding that, we'll hold those until the next meeting. Moving on to board of education members reports, are there any member reports? Not, we can move on to the principals report.
Well, we're starting to put some things in place, you know, and hopefully things kind of continue where they're going. Maybe some of this will build pull off. Winding down the school year, we started seniors checked in today, some of them. They'll finish that up tomorrow and then we also start with our schedule for the rest of our students. That'll be taking place in the high school. You know, I'm, I'm pretty happy with how things have turned out. The teachers have really stepped up, our kids have really stepped up for the most part. It hasn't been easy. There's been a lot, there's been some frustration and some parents that, you know, that technology is a little bit overwhelming when they're trying to check and see if their kids are doing the work and whatnot. But, you know, considering what we got thrown into, you know, I, I'm kind of glad we're wrapping things up because everybody's just getting stepped away from it. A lot of stress for parents, kids, teachers, everybody. So, you know, I think, I think we're, we've done pretty well. Especially there's some, some that hurt other districts. Our senior class will be dismissed tomorrow. They'll do their drive around the school. Basically, they're going to pull up in their cars and they'll sit in their cars and they'll go out at one o'clock. Leave it in and they drive around the hall for a while. It's one of those things they really want to look forward to doing, so we're trying to do what we can for them. We have graduation set, scheduled now. And, you know, hopefully they'll be able to do that. We have done a little bit of prep or a backup plan. Basically, what I need to do now is once we, once we get sluitory and invalidatory and, obviously I'll have to give those kids times for air speech and then we'll have them come and report speeches. Probably the last, or last week of pay. And then there's some other things. First of all, like maybe something, they have to use that. This is Gary and I will probably do it and take some stuff too. So hopefully it's footage we don't have to use, but I told the kids we're doing it. So that's kind of why we're over there. We are setting eighth grade promotion. And, and I like the fact we're doing it tonight before that way, you know, there's some logistical things that we see. You know, and it kind of gives us a little bit of a trial run. Not that it's not important, but there's, there's going to be some logistics that probably we're not going to think about pop up. So, you know, that's, and I'm glad we're going to be able to do some for those kids. So the prom, you know, we haven't really officially made that the date. You know, prom's probably the one thing that, you know, I told the kids that, you know, I would try to do what I could to get something for them. You know, it's one of those things that is, we get probably closer to June. I'll probably, this is Gary and I'll probably talk to our county health. We'll probably look into something outside, maybe just like some Puerto Street dance type thing. But, so it's not going to be your traditional, you know, necessarily prom that you're used to seeing. But if, if we can do something for the kids and we can do it safely and it's something that is okay with our county health, we'll definitely try to pull that off. But I talked to the after prom, said this is kind of the day we're looking at. We've got our line scheduled done for the junior high and high schools, so that's good. There's been some little worry about our incoming seventh graders. I don't know why I called it graduates on there, but. Our incoming seventh graders, and, you know, they haven't, they haven't enrolled in their electives yet. And so, you know, we talked about trying to have it do it online and it just, you know, we just thought it'd be better just to do it all at once. So we're going to set a date in early August for them to come in. I've kind of talked to the teachers and they're, they're okay with doing that. I'll have a walk around the school, public poll man, explain what, what those electives look like. Give a chance to go home, talk to their parents and they enroll officially enroll in August. We'll, we'll be in those classes, so. And so we do have a plan for those kids coming through. That is kind of a, an ability to intimidate those kids. We'll make sure we give them opportunity to start. Mr. Driving set up the plan for driver's ed. He just sent us information a little bit ago. There's some things with testing that has to be done in person. We're probably looking to do it in auditoriums, computer social distancing. We have 26 kids signed up right now. Once our plan is approved, then we can look at the driving part that has to be approved. And that's, that's a state, it's simply need to be approved for the driving part. That's what we're looking at there. We have set up summer school for the seven 12. And generally, we do that as credit recovery. But this year, I kind of, I want to do a couple of things. One, you know, there's some kids where, you know, maybe had trouble with the online on stuff. We can bring them in, not that we bring them in for the full month, but, you know, maybe come in for a few days. Also some kids that maybe, you know, that may not happy with what their grade was. Get them an opportunity to raise their grade up if, if, and they need some one-on-one with the teacher or whatnot. So that's kind of why we're setting that up the way that is. Just have to see what, what we have as far as needs. How many kids we're going to have. Then we are starting to look at summer wait since that's going to open up a little bit also. We met with Mr. Stevenson and Mr. Dries will resume, kind of talk some logistics. And then they're going to, I think they sent out a long day to see what kind of numbers we need to get. Obviously that's going to be something we have to track up. And then they're going to meet with the kids, I think sometime late next week and kind of talk about expectations of what that's going to look like. So we do have a plan in place there. And then we did have our April night students of the month, Abby Molina and Ruthman and Jersey Kaiser. And the rest of that stuff, I think I pretty much already talked about with our upcoming plans. Definitely know a lot more now than I did last month at this time, but that may be changed by the time we get to next, next month. So all we can do is plan and hope.
Agreed. Are there any questions? If not, move on to the super events report.
Okay. In your packet, I just put a couple of documents. One is the return schedule and then that way you can kind of see what that looks like district wide. So, and it follows right along with what Mr. Cope said, with the seniors starting today. And then the rest of the student body, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. And then on Friday, for any students who still need to check in devices. Because while we set up the schedule, we still wanted them to be able to hang on to their devices if they needed it. Teachers have planned virtual field trips and last minute things with their classes. And so some families have access to devices while others might need to hang on to ours. So that's what that looks like as far as the check-in procedure. And then the next page that you should have is a color document that just shows you a draft for summer school. These are just some tentative plans, as Mr. Cope mentioned, what he was thinking about for the high school. As you're aware, in the past, our summer school has just been credit recovery for our ninth through 12th grade students. So this is what we're looking at as far as the months are concerned for June and July. So the bottom two are what Mr. Cope talked about, that we would start credit recovery and continuous learning plan at the junior high and high school on June 15th. And we would run that through July 10th as needed. And that would coincide with driver's ed. And then the elementary school would start July 13th and run through the 23rd. That would also coincide with our summer food service program. So as you might remember, we talked a little bit about applying for the summer food service program. We, we have done so, we were approved. And so we will run that meals beginning June 1st and continuing through July 24th. So that'll be Monday through Thursday. And then our extended school year for, through special education for, through the special education co-op. What we're talking about right now is June 29th through July 23rd. Those are kind of what we're thinking about for summer school. And you've heard me talk before about the cares dollars. And so the cares dollars, there are 12 different categories. Can be used for a variety of different things. It's additional money, it's federal money that will come to our district through code sevens, our federal funds. It's allocated based on our title one needs, but it's not title one dollars. So we can use that to help us with any additional areas that we see that we would need because of all of, all of this that we've been going through. In discussions with Mr. Cope, we feel that probably the best place to begin is what needs do our students have? What have they missed out over these last couple of weeks and how can we support them? So that's how I'm recommending that we would pay for the summer schools program is through our cares dollars. So we do have until September of 2021 to have all of the dollars spent out. But I think beginning this summer might be a good place to start with that. Just want to mention that we, I've been having Monday morning coffee via Zoom with all of our staff who is able to join us. We have at least 50 join every Monday morning. Last week, we had the good fortune of having Dell Dennis join us. The deputy commissioner joined us and he did an amazing job of reminding faculty and staff. His message was you make a difference. So with it being teacher and staff appreciation week, it was a good time to have him join us. So we were thrilled to have him on our Zoom meeting. And then this morning, I had invited Dr. Randy Watson, so our ASD commissioner vet, and he joined us. And he did an excellent job this morning as well. He talked to the staff about a lot of the things that they hear me talking about. So it was good to reinforce some of those things. He talked about the continuous learning plan and how throughout the summer, he has a task force that's working on a continuous learning plan. Should we need to implement something like this next school year? That'll be released in June and then, so we'll be meeting with our staff in August and getting some contingency plans ready as well. I thought I would update you on some building maintenance products, or excuse me, projects. So eight out of our 24 rooms have been completed in phase two of a carpet project. And then they are ripping out more carpet this week in some of those classrooms. And then with installation next week as well. Playground equipment has been removed. So those three pieces of equipment that we were having sandblasted, those have been removed. And they'll be sandblasted and painted before they're reinstalled. Looks like we'll be installing the basketball court on the elementary playground later this month. And the football field and the practice field have both been received. Training today will be good for that. Just as I mentioned, the district office summer hours. So typically we move into summer hours during the months of June and July. So if the board is okay with it, the district office hours would be 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 7:00 to 11:00 on Fridays.
Are there any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the reports. So we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. Move on to number nine, discussion and possible approval of the athletic training contract. Similar to numerous years now, I think, if I'm thinking right. The past, Works County Health Center is offering athletic training coverage for us for the 2021 school year. It is the same services that we've gotten previous years in terms of, uh, for whether they're, whether they're onsite with us. No changes there. And expenses would be exactly the same. So 500 for services throughout the year and $200 per home football game. Because of course we have them onsite for possible injuries during, during those. So there is a full copy of the agreement. If you want to read through that, but again, no changes or the timeframe or changes to what is being covered or the expense to us. So does anybody have any questions or concerns about continuing with Works County Health Center for those services? Done a great job. To the best of my knowledge. If there's no questions or concerns, I would entertain a motion to approve continuing with Works County Health Center for our athletic training contract for $500 for services throughout the year plus 200 per home football game.
Home move.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. Forward to continuing to work with that. Moving on then to 10, discussion and possible approval of our cooperative agreement for junior high football. As I'm sure most of you remember, last year, we had a junior high football agreement with Natoma. Junior high is a little bit different to high school in that it is a one-year agreement. It's not two years like we do on the high school ones. So we're here again. I assume that from the coaching staff, interest still continues to be able to do this. Obviously it allows enough kids for it to work well.
Yes, Mr. Cope and I visited with Mr. Dries, Mr. Brush and Mr. Stevenson. They were all in favor of that continuing.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve continuing in the junior high football cooperative agreement with Natoma for the 2021 school year. Do we have a motion?
Home move.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. Glad we continue to offer that for the kids, our district, and there's both. So continuing along the exact same lines. 11, discussion and possible approval of the cooperative agreement for high school softball. So we didn't talk about this one last year because it is a two-year commitment for scheduling purposes. And I believe, if I believe I think incorrectly. So we are back to another year, or two, two years on that one. Same question as with football, we have, coaching staff is all still interested in continuing with that. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? I think it's always been, so far it's been a positive experience, so. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve or continuing in a two-year high school softball cooperative agreement with the Stockton School District. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a second? All in favor? Opposed? That carries. All right, we'll move on to 12, discussion and possible approval of our schools for quality education membership. This would be for the 2021 school year. It's 375, just as it was last year. Again, the main benefit that it gets us is our lobbyist at the state house, Dave Mannan. So especially considering, I'm sure we're going to be having some legislative fights or pushes, or I'm not sure what word will be the right word, over the next year or two around funding and things like that that could greatly impact those of us in, you know, smaller districts in the state. I'm personally, obviously, in favor of continuing with SQE. Does anybody have any thoughts or concerns about continuing our membership with schools for quality education? If not, I would move that we renew our membership with schools for quality education for the 2021 year. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All, all in favor? Opposed? That carries. Move on then to 13, executive session for personnel. I move that we go into executive session with superintendent Lisa Garing and high school principal Jeremy Cope to discuss personnel and supplemental positions pursuant to non-elected personnel exemptions under coma. The opening, open meeting will resume in the board meeting in 25 minutes, which is 7:49 PM. Do we have a motion?
I was going to second, if you already made a motion.
I did actually say I move on that, didn't I? Sorry. We have a motion, we have, we have a second. We have a second, all in favor? Opposed? That carries? I always forget that one, it says I move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We will have a drive-through luncheon at noon where teachers and staff will be able to come by and pick up their lunch on a grab-and-go and then go back to their home offices and join an informal lunch conversation at 12:30 on a Zoom meeting and then with our end-of-the-year in-service starting at 1 o'clock. So I've included an agenda for you to view so you can kind of see what we have planned for that morning. But we're going to wrap up our end-of-the-year luncheon and then in-service via Zoom on Friday. Excellent. Last but not least, I'd entertain a motion for German. Ooh. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor?
Second.
Opposed? That carries. And then last, we have a resignation from junior high boys' basketball coaching position from Troy Osmeier. I'd entertain a motion to approve that resignation.
So.
Do we have a second? We have a second. I'd entertain a motion for his time helping out with that program as well. All in favor? Opposed? That carries. All of those. And we'll move on to number 15. Review for the end-of-year appreciation meal.
Okay. So teacher and staff appreciation luncheon is scheduled for this Friday. We will have a drive-through luncheon at noon where teachers and staff will be able to come by and pick up their lunch on a grab-and-go and then go back to their home offices and join an informal lunch conversation at 12:30 on a Zoom meeting and then with our end-of-the-year in-service starting at 1 o'clock. So I've included an agenda for you to view so you can kind of see what we have planned for that morning. But we're going to wrap up our end-of-the-year luncheon and then in-service via Zoom on Friday.
Excellent. Last but not least, I'd entertain a motion for German. Ooh. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor?
Second.
Oh, little lad Harrison, but we're still... We'll count the vote. All in favor? Opposed? That carries. Have a great evening.